Yes, Mayor, I'm here, I'm sorry.
Sorry to wake you up. First item on the agenda is the most important item, as you noticed, Councilmember Dina Higgins is not here. And that's because she-- I'm out of practice. It's been five weeks, what can I say? Notice how in unison they all go figure it out. I'm glad you guys are awake. As I-- I was just asking you, the first on my agenda is to review the agenda for our next Monday's regular council meeting, sorry about that. And then we'll get to item number two. Which, you can tell this is item number two because there's that big "two" in front of us. Page two, items 2 through 3C. Items 3D through 3I. Items 4A and 4B. Items 4C and 4D. Items 4E and 4F. Items 4G through 4I. Items 4J through 4L. Items 4M and 4N. Items 4O and 4P, is that okay, is that better?
Perfect.
Okay, good. 4O and 4P. Items 4Q through 4S. Items 5A through 6E. Items 7A through 7D. Items 8A through 8C. Items 8D through 8G. Items 9A through 9G. I think we have more subdivision plots on the agenda than we've had in the last five years combined. I take it that's a good sign?
Yes, sir.
Good. And items 10A through 11B.
Mayor, just 10A, that's just a reminder, that was the item that came up, if you remember, recall, we had a citizen that came up, I think it was one of our last meetings, trying to work out an opportunity for them to hook up to the city's wastewater system. But not-- so we came up with a development agreement and solution for them. So, want to know that that's the-- this is the follow-up item to that individual who was here, I believe it was the last meeting or so before we left.
Ms. Mr. Sharkey, we don't normally take--
I was just here to answer any questions.
Okay, well, great, good, 'cause, yeah, I appreciate that. Any questions for-- okay, good, thank you. All right. Golly, you'd think we'd be on vacation or something. Now, before I was rudely interrupted. Item 2A, you've noticed Councilmember Dina Higgins is not here because she submitted her resignation, which is effective today. According to the charter, the council has two options in filling a vacancy in the council midterm. One is to appoint a member, a new member, the other is to call a special election. So, the first item we'll talk about is whether we would like to appoint or call a special election. If we were to call a special election, and that's why Ms. Spinner's on the phone, we have Alfred Smith here, I believe the election would be held at earliest, how?
Mayor, council members, the election would have to be held within 120 days of the date of the vacancy, which would be today, so December 15th would be the technical election date. Now, the reason I hesitate in that is that we've got a conflict between our charter and state law, which, as you recall, a couple of years ago, state law was changed to only allow elections to occur on four specific dates. December 15th unfortunately isn't one of those, so we would run into a conundrum as to, do we follow our charter, which says 120 days, or do we follow state law, which would then allow us to have our election either in March or May of next year? I'm not sure that it would be feasible to even be able to have a special election because by law, we would-- any candidate would have to have their nominating petitions in 90 days before the election, which would make that today would be the deadline to do that. So, realistically, the-- it's not feasible to be able to have a candidate be on the ballot.
Wait, I'm missing your math.
Yes, sir.
We have to have the election within 120 days--
120 days.
--from today.
Correct.
And they have to have their petitions in 90 days before--
Correct. Is my math off?
Are those the same day?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's September 15th.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, September 15th.
All right.
But the charter requires us to give 10 days to-- at least a minimum of 10 days
to collect petition, right?
Correct, correct.
All right.
Yes.
So, we would have to call the election today, give everyone 30 days to do a petition, and then have an election on December 15th, if we were to follow the charter.
Correct, and I guess I defer to the city clerk, whether that would be feasible or not to be able to do that.
Councilmember Richens?
The Supreme Court ruling yesterday only dealt with the year in which we hold an election on that charter, or did it deal with the autonomy of cities to hold elections when they want?
Yes and no. What it did was that it was a narrowly tailored decision that actually referred specifically to Phoenix and Tucson. But there now been two court decisions related to charter cities and their ability to call their own elections. You know, this would be an interesting one, I'm not really up to have a court fight just so we can have an election. But I, you know, this would be an interesting question because which trumps? Having a special election only on the city, on the state mandated date, or fulfilling the need to fill a council position, which would seem to defer to the city charter because it would thwart our need to fill a council seat from December to possibly May. You know, that's six months. So, you know, I think we'd have a pretty good case to go in and say that city charter would trump, but I, you know, I'm not really in the mood to-- well, and then, let's finish that up. So, we either have it December, and we could have a legal-- well, we do have a conflict--
Conflict, correct.
--which could create a legal challenge. The second thing then is if we'd follow state law, it would be in March.
March 11.
March 11.
March 11.
Now, this seat is up for election anyway, next August, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, if we chose to have a special election, let's say we chose to defer to state law, we would have an election in March with a possible runoff in May, and then we would turn around again the end of August and have the regular election because this seat would only be filled from the date that a person was elected in either March or May, and then the end of the year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Because I think our charter states that the person shall fill out the unfulfilled term.
That's correct.
Unlike other cities, I know, like in Phoenix, if there's an election, the person takes-- if there's the regular election and they've had an appointment, the person takes office the date the election is certified, which would-- could be as early as September. But our charter specifically states fills out the term, right?
Correct.
So, this person, whether appointed or through a special election, is going to serve until January 2015, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, if we appoint, and that's if we elect, so are there any questions on if we were to call a special election?
Quick question.
Yeah.
Cost, estimated cost?
For a special election in March, pretty comparable to what we're going to have in special election in November, around $1,000.
Okay.
For one district?
Well, I stand corrected, I'm sorry.
Well, actually, you sit corrected, but that's all right.
Thank you. I will have to get those figures together, but it's still--
Significant.
It's gonna be a couple hundred, it's probably gonna be $150,000, $200,000 no matter what. Okay. Now, if we appoint, the charter requires us to appoint within--
Within 30 days of--
30 days.
Today.
Of today.
Vacancy, correct.
So, that would be today, that would be September then 14th.
14th, which is a Saturday, so realistically, you'd have to do it by the 12th.
Or the-- We could do the 15th. Well, if it's a Saturday, does it roll over to the Monday, or, I would think that it would, but let's say by the 12th.
Yeah, to be safe, to be safe.
To be safe.
We'd want to do it on the 12th, correct.
Now, if we do not appoint, let's say, for whatever reason, we don't get together, then what?
If you don't appoint, Mayor, under the charter, you're required to have a special election.
So, the charter comes in, and then it's not our option. If we don't appoint by September 14th, then the charter then kicks in, and we have a special election.
Correct.
That special election, I would assume, would be the same 120 days out.
That's correct.
And you'd fall into the special election. The only difference is that we would not have that option at that time, the charter would then mandate.
Correct. And then, as you pointed out, Mayor, the position would stay vacant until that person was elected and the election results were certified.
All right, so it would stay vacant.
Correct.
Because once, and we had the opportunity to appoint, and we did not.
Correct, there would be no council member for District 5 for a period of five to six or more months, depending on how long it took.
All righty, does that lay out the two options in that we have today, starting with? Any discussion or question or proposal or motion or anything on which option to choose?
A move that we appoint.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Summers, and a second from the Vice Mayor that we appoint. Go through the appointment process, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, we will now then move ahead with the parameters of appointment. Mr. Brady, I think staff has--
Do we have that slide? Can we pull up that slide on the--
By the way, best slide presentation ever.
One page, if you like that? There.
Now, just so we're-- there is no mandated procedure--
Right.
--for appointments. We do have precedents, we do have, you know, there have been several times, but there is no mandated procedure, so we basically can follow, we can define the procedure--
Right.
--that we want to follow. But we have to do so, once again, in consideration of the timeline that we're dealing with, which is only 30 days, so.
Correct. Mayor, ironically, the last time that the council faces a decision was with District 5, with the resignation of former Councilmember Griswold.
Is there something in the water up there or something?
I'm not sure, Mayor, I live in that area, and the water seems fine, but--
You're not going anywhere, are you?
I'm not resigning. But there is some history, after your discussion here, if you'd like to hear as to what they did the last time.
Okay. All righty, so Mr. Brady, let's go over the timeline.
Right, so here's a proposed timeline for mayor and council, just, again, trying to fit this within the 30 days, and trying to stick as closely as possible to Monday and Thursday scheduled council meetings that we already have planned. So, today, obviously, we have a study session, receive direction, if we're going through to the appointment process, what we will do is, today, we will, we're prepared to send out a press release and announcing that this position is open for appointment and soliciting any interest there might be. We have already developed a online application that I think we've provided to the council. It very much follows the board and commission application, online application, but it does include, as part of that application, a request for them to provide a expression of their interest, of why they're interested in this position. So, there is a text box that we would ask them to fill out, to provide to the council, for them to express their interest, and why they feel they're best qualified to fill this position. So, we have that, will can be available today, this afternoon, that will be available. We would propose then--
I would say that would be available.
Online?
There would be a place online, and on our webpage, there would be a very well-defined link.
We'll make it a prominent connect.
So, anyone could go onto the MesaZ.gov, they'd see this link prominently displayed, and they could just click on it, and we take them right to the application, and they can literally fill that in online, and then submit.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor, and that would be available today, and we would work with our media outlets to get that information out, so everyone would be aware of how to do that. What we would propose to council is that we would have, the deadline for submitting those applications would be a week from today at 5:00 PM. That would allow us to receive those applications, and then transmit those to the mayor and city council the evening of the 22nd. So, as part of the packet that goes out on every Thursday, you would, we would include all the applications that were received by the 5 o'clock deadline on August 22nd. And then what we would propose is that would give council the weekend an opportunity to review those applications, and then on August 26th, we would then have an opportunity for the council to discuss and determine which candidates you would like to interview from that list, whether it's all of them or a group of them, the council would then have the opportunity to have that discussion.
And a lot of that will be determined based on how many applications we get.
Right, so you'll, you know, not knowing how many that would be, so we've left that opportunity for the 26th of August. And what we would plan to, and let all candidates know even today, is that we would prepare or plan for interview of the candidates by the council on September 5th at a study session. And so, that would then, depending on whatever number council would determine, we would set up those interviews for the 5th, and then anticipating then a final decision and appointment of a council District 5 representative on your, we'd call a special council meeting for September 12th.
Okay.
So, that's, again, trying to, I think that meets the requirement of getting this completed within the 30 days. We're trying to use the meetings that are, the council's already scheduled to be in attendance, and using those times to make that happen.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Brady on this proposed schedule?
I think it's wonderful. The presentation's genius.
So, you've commented on the style, what about the sub-style?
Oh, I think it works, Mayor.
Okay, all right, so no problems with this schedule and the approach, and then, once again, we'll have to make some other decisions, because if we get three applications by next Thursday, then it's a, you know, fairly straightforward. If we get 33 applications, then it's a different issue.
Correct.
So, I would say come prepared to discuss how, if we have more than, you know, a reasonable amount, we'd decide, is that three, is that four, is that five? To discuss how we would whittle that down from the number of applications over, and usually, we go with three or four for an interview, that's what we've done on other openings. Figure out how we would want to whittle that down from the large number. Like, last time, I believe, getting back to District 5, I think there were like 12 applications at that time.
Correct, Mayor, there were 12, and it was whittled down to four candidates.
The council ended up interviewing four, so have your thought process to how we would whittle that down. I'm not sure that any of us would like to have 12 interviews, and my guess is that there will be, there will be some bit of consensus to the top-tier candidates. Okay, any questions on that? All right.
Very good, thank you.
So, do we give direct, well, we formally decide, give the direction to issue the applications in accordance with Mr. Brady's-- Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move ahead with that process. Next item is item 2B, here, presentation discussed, write direction, update to the proposed bike share program.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council, my name is Neil Curley, I'm the Management Assistant in the City Manager's Office, and this morning with me I have Natalie Lewis, also the City Manager's Office, Jim Hash, our City of Mesa Bicycle Coordinator, and Josh Squire, the CEO of Cycle Hop. And we're here today to talk to you about the regional bike share system, and since last time we discussed this with you, we have been continuing regional talks with Phoenix, Tempe, ASU, and Valley Metro to create a system that would be uniform and consistent from a user standpoint across the valley. And also, since last time, we have discussed this with you, Cycle Hop, Josh's company, has been selected as the bike share vendor and operator, and this represents a little bit of a change from the model we presented to you last time, in that it's kind of the next generation of bike share technology. It's more advanced and allows users more flexibility and freedom. But before we get to that, I'll go ahead and toss it over to Jim, to talk a little bit about bike share in Mesa specifically.
As we described to the council previously, the primary goals of bike share in Mesa are to increase the existing access to rail and transit, as well as future infrastructure, and to provide a new affordable transit tool for social clients, the students around and in the downtown, business owners and employees in the downtown area, as well as visitors coming to downtown Mesa to spend time and their money at our stores, so. All these goals are in alignment, are in concert with the city's strategic initiatives, the general plan, the transportation plan, the Bicycle Master Plan, as well as the central main area plan. Phoenix is in a cooperative agreement, has envisioned their bicycle share program as Phase 1 of a regional program. The City of Mesa, Tempe, and City of Phoenix, as Neil said earlier, are working towards establishing a regional governing body that will look at how we grow and develop smartly and regionally, so it's for the better good of all municipalities involved now, as well as ones coming onboard in the future, as the system expands throughout the valley. With those regional goals in mind, it's imperative that we have a single provider, a system provider, that can put that system together and initiate it throughout the whole region, so it's a seamless user face for all people out there wanting to use bicycle share. Mesa's looking to launch its portion of the system in April for Valley Bike Month. We'd like, we're going to launch it with 250 bikes that are, will be provided through sponsorship opportunities with Cycle Hop, as well as transportation dollars that have been budgeted for this year to move forward. And with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Josh, and he'll let you know about Cycle Hop and how the whole thing works.
Morning. Thanks for inviting us to this meeting. We're excited to be part of the regional bike share program, we're excited that Mesa has interest in joining this regional effort, and we think it's going to enhance both your transportation options, and it's also going to promote healthy living and fitness, which is always great. And it's really a great way to get around town, and for trips less than two, three miles, a bike is a great option. And as was mentioned here, having a regional program really supports that effort and allows people to move about between the cities, and use the same membership card to access a bike if they're going to the ballpark, or if they're in their own town and want to just go to the supermarket and go shopping. So, another nice thing about bike share, that it promotes economic activity as well, and there's been some studies that when people bike around, they tend to stop and shop, and notice the cafe or the restaurant, or the retail, and it also promotes better community, where when you're in the car, you don't necessarily notice things, or talk to people in the other car or on bike, you know, you do stop and notice things, and it does promote that sense of community, which is also great. So, we're happy to bring bike share to Mesa and the region, and we are in the process of talking to some companies who have expressed interest in sponsoring the program, and to minimize the cost to the city. And the technology part of the bike is something that's really unique, and we think is actually great for your city in particular, which is less dense, and what it allows to maximize the number of trips with a less amount of bikes, because you have the ability to park the bike at a hub station where you have a group of 10, 15 bikes, but if you want to go somewhere where there's, there is no hub station necessarily there, you could still lock it to a regular public bike rack, and then our distribution team will go out and collect those bikes as necessary. So, each bike also has its own GPS unit on it, so they're trackable, and we could locate them, and it also deters theft. And another interesting part is, though, we could study the trips and see where people are going, and based on that, you could enhance cycling infrastructure, and/or add more bikes or reduce bikes based on the number of trips that are being taken. And we will provide reports on a monthly basis, so you'd have access to all that information, and make the best of it. And that's what the bike looks like, and we're in the process of branding, and we're looking to choose a brand name that is appropriate for all the cities, that it doesn't necessarily say one city name on it, but a name that is a unifying name, and we're going to be presenting some branding options. There's also a unique connectivity with the light rail, and we want to enhance and promote the use of the light rail, and what we do is with bike share provides the last mile trip, and helps you get to and from the light rail, and enhances that transit option as well. So, it's really a complement to other existing transit, it offers a healthy way to get, a healthy and fun way to get around, and even on a hot day, you still get a nice breeze when you're biking, so.
It's amazing how an entire presentation's credibility can go down the two-- One statement. But that's okay.
Go for redemption.
We got seven months of good biking weather here.
Typical Chamber, Arizona Chamber of Commerce. Yeah, just wait till October. Vice Mayor, you had a question?
It was interesting, Mr. Brady and I had an opportunity to go to a luncheon yesterday, and we sat down with a couple of these university presidents that are coming into downtown Mesa, and there was a discussion about how to get from light rail to their location and some of the mobility issues. So, I think it's very timely and exciting to think as we bring in these new students, we're having this wonderful grand opening today, that we can look at these options, and these students will have the opportunity to do it. So, I'm a big supporter, I utilized with my family back in DC, the bike share program. Wonderful experience, easy to use, I can't say enough positive things about it, great memories, so I'm really excited to see how it's used functionally for everyday use in life around here. But, a quick question, costs, where's all that picked up?
So, we actually have, so you mentioned students, so for students, we are offering some discounted rates, and the membership is about $79 per year, and that's one option. You could also use it on a one-time basis, and with that membership, typically, the way bike share works is you get a certain amount of free time per day to ride it, so we want to promote sharing of the bike, and it's serving short trips, so if you're looking to ride a bike for four, five hours, it might not be the best option for you. And $79 is comparable to other bike share programs, but we're also going to promote use by corporate and students and other community that are interested in using the service, but may not be able to afford it, so we're going to offer some discounted rates for them, for that, for those segments of the population, and we're working with staff on that. So, there's going to be some flexibility with the rates, and we could always reduce it, but those are the--
So, as I look at this schedule, you have the membership price, so you basically set up an account, and you pay the price, and then the right time per day applies to those who have memberships, right? So, you get an hour a day, if you have a membership, for free, and then after that, if you're going to use it more than that, then you're charged.
Correct.
That's correct. And if you don't have a membership or haven't paid for that, then it's not available to you.
You could still access the bike through DayPass, so you could purchase a DayPass--
Okay.
--and access the bike.
Okay. Now, is that purchasing a DayPass right at the unit, or is there a kiosk at the deal, or how does that work?
So, you have multiple options with this specific technology, you could purchase it from your cellphone, you could purchase it from a tablet or a PC in your office, or you could purchase it from the kiosk, which is right by the hub station.
And then, where you purchase it, and you like set up a PIN or something like that?
Correct.
That you, then, I saw a keypad on the bike, and so you come up with this PIN, and then you enter in the PIN and some ID number or something like that?
Exactly, exactly.
Good.
Perfect, and we'll go and have Jim talk a little bit about, we've also drafted up some possible proposed-- Nope?
Move the man, thank you. With the initial analysis input that we received from the residents, as well as our nonprofit partners, we put together a Phase 1 system that we feel that it's going to work really well together. It'll include 11 stations, five of which will be at our existing and new light rail stations that will be opening in 2015, as well as-- stations that will be opening in 2015, as well as, as six other locations that will be located at or around our nonprofit partners. We, we plan on, as part of the, the transportation money that was budgeted for is provide, we're, we're providing a subsidy program so that the folks with our nonprofit agencies will be able to access those bikes for, for free with, with help from the city. So I'll throw it back to Neil now, so you can talk about funding.
Perfect. Yeah, Josh mentioned earlier, he's, him and his team are currently seeking sponsors that will provide bikes for the program. And we also, as Jim mentioned, have budget set aside for other infrastructure improvements such as lighting and the kiosks that mentioned, that Josh mentioned earlier, that would allow you to purchase kind of a day pass, annual pass or monthly pass right at the site. And moving forward, so we're working, still working regionally, having those discussions and working to, with the goal to launch bike share spring of 2014. So people will be able to use those. And then April is that target date to launch, to coincide with Valley Bike Month. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
So since your launch is well before the completion of light rail, you'd set up stations, either find the permanent spot near where the light rail station's going to be or, or put it where the existing bus stops are for the BRT.
Yeah. You're exactly right, Mayor. The, the idea now is that we would be setting this up in such a way that they would connect, the, the riders would be able to connect to the existing bus stations. And it gives us some time to really evaluate the program and figure out where these really need to be long-term. They're very flexible, so we can move these stations very easily. We can add bikes to them. We can take bikes away from them. We can figure out exactly, you know, how this really fits for Mesa. So, so initially it'll get them access to and from the bus service and then long-term it will be the, the light rail. And then as light rail continues to expand, our goal would be to try to expand with it.
Yeah. Because my guess is, is that your ridership and your usership is going to be very different on a bus scenario versus a light rail.
Right.
Lot more people and different people ride light rail than ride bus. Councilman Kavanaugh?
It seems to me that the recommendation you're presenting to us really combines the best practices from all the other bike share programs around the country because it seems to have more flexibility for both the user, riders, and for the, the host cities that are doing it where you're, where you can access the bike, again, through your phone and, and not necessarily at a kiosk, but I think that you have the opportunity to move around, monitor the system and adjust it to usage. And so I want to commend you on it because it, these programs have been popular in other communities, but this really seems to be the, the latest version or upgraded version from what we've seen other communities do. And so I support what you're recommending. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Maybe we can find a, someone like Citibank who, I think they bought all the, in New York City, all the bikes are Citibikes.
Mm-hmm.
And Citibank is underwriting everything. So every time, next time you bank at Citibank, remember you're funding New York's bike share program.
What about advertising? Is there any advertising on there?
Really tiny ads on the bikes? Naming rights to the bike?
Shade for the structures, advertising.
I'm sure there's all sorts of things.
Well, I mean, is there the ability in the contract to-
There is. And, and there's actually the ability to have that advertising structure at the, at the bicycle hub location. So that's part of the station setup when you go through the station. So those advertising opportunities will be available.
How does that jive with our bus shelter advertising and, or the lack thereof and billboards and all that kind of stuff?
Mayor, Councilmember, we're actually bringing a program to you in the next couple of weeks to talk about going out for an RFP for transit advertising and the components of that. So you'll see that in the next couple of weeks about the criteria that we're going to be using and what's allowed to be advertised and so forth. So that's coming forward in about two weeks.
And that will take into consideration though, the fact this is going to exist.
Well, and that really goes to the sign code.
Yeah.
And how we'll have to deal with that.
But it also goes to the ability, because if you're going to have, if you're going to have, we're going to have transit advertising, bus shelter, now you have bike share, you know, the, how are those going to intermingle?
Yes.
Councilman Glover?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. How do these combat the heat in Arizona and what is the longevity or the lifespan of the bike?
So the bike is, has a warranty of five years on it and, but they're constantly getting maintained. So, you know, a bike, if you maintain it and replace the parts, it could last for a very, very long time, right? And the heat is an issue that we're looking at and, for example, the saddle is going to be a lighter color versus darker color. So it doesn't attract as much heat. The grips, we want to make sure that they don't melt in your hand when you grab them. So that's something that we're looking at. And one thing we know, we're not going to have a problem with the solar panels because they're going to get patio sun. We've been testing that already and the scale just jumped right out there really quick. So, yeah, so it's, and, you know, we, we've also been looking at some creative ideas of creating cycle stops where you could refresh throughout the community. And we're, we're looking at some manufacturers that have some interesting products in that area where you could, you know, somewhere along the bike route, stop and, and just refresh and, and rest. And we're also going to do some, some marketing and communicate to, to the public how to bike in, under those conditions. And, and really you want to pace yourself and, and hydrate.
Will the bikes have bells on them?
They will have bells on them, of course.
Streamers? Playing cards I can put in the, in the spokes?
They will have a basket.
I'm sorry, what?
They will have a basket.
Basket, playing cards. There should be a venue, but playing cards and, and clothespins. Do they even make clothespins anymore, by the way?
Yes.
Oh, Deanne goes, yeah, they do. She jumps, she jumps right in. Sure, Mayor.
We can set up a bike special for you, Mayor.
Oh, good. Thank you. Streamers out of the handle? Okay. No, this is great.
We'll hook you up.
It's been interesting and I have had the same experience that the vice mayor has to travel, you know, to larger cities and to see bike shares take off literally in the last two, three years. It's been a lot of fun to see, you know, as you go around in DC or New York or London, three I've seen, and you see a lot of people using those, even on these busy urban streets. It'll be really interesting to see how this, this kicks in because I've seen it work and it's, 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 it's interesting.
It's great. Yeah, it's almost in 50 cities in the US. And it's exploded the last couple of years and it's growing and it's time to bring it here too.
I, I'm amazed at the engineering of those bikes and the design to make bikes that are incredibly functional and yet so squirrely looking you would never want to steal it. That's pretty, that's pretty good. They're, they're still fashionable, but, you know, they, they scream bike share. That's great. That's good. I like that. All righty. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also excited that this is a regional thing with, I know Mayor Stanton always talks about, how, how's Mesa coming along? I said, we're, we're getting there, we're getting there. So I know they're excited about the fact that we're joining, so this will truly be a, a regional, at least a three-city along the light rail system, which I think is important.
And there's the ability to expand further if other cities want to join us later.
Great. Thank you. Next item is to hear, oh, next item is to approve appointments for boards and committees. I think you got the, the memo. Have a motion, Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second, Councilman Kavanaugh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Information pertaining to current job order contracting projects. Any questions for staff on?
Just two projects, yeah.
Just two projects? Any questions if you should have received the report? Okay. Knowledge received of minutes of various boards and committees. Motion from Councilman Glover, second from the vice mayor, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Here are reports on meetings and our conferences attended.
Or vacations.
Or vacation, vacations. We've already heard one vacation story, which was really good, I think, very pertinent vacation story. I think everyone kept busy. Councilman Glover?
There's no use to pushing the button. I think the mic's already working. But I had the opportunity to travel back and visit the home campuses of Wilkes University, Westminster College and Albright College, and it was a wonderful experience.
And which one are you going to attend? You, a college tour you were on.
You know, I haven't made that decision up here, so we'll see. But it was great meeting the faculty and staff at each university and seeing what they're going to be bringing to Mesa. One thing I'd ask Mr. Brady is maybe in the future, we could have a update on how the higher education initiative is going and hear from the schools and their perspective so that we can be informed of what's going on.
Anything else? Go for it.
I'm a chatty Cathy today, but-
I've got to say, we're making up for lost time, aren't we?
Yes, we are. I want to do a personal shout-out to both Parks and Rec and Mesa PD, to Mark Hirschberg, to Chief Frank Milstad, and to Officer Brendan, Brandon Mendoza, Officer Nellie Muller, Patty Tracy from the prosecutor's office. They've done a wonderful part, a wonderful job for Guerrero Park and helping clean up the neighborhood. And their passion and drive is something that is great to see in our, in my district and in our city. So I just want to thank them personally for all the hard work that they've been doing to make that neighborhood a great place to live.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
And once again, it's great to be back. My wife keeps asking me now, I thought you were on break for five weeks. Because we go to all these events and meetings and community events. So thank you for everyone and staff for holding down the fort while we were not officially here, but I know every council member, Mrs. Councilmember Glover did. We were involved in a variety of things, whether it be local, community, or I know all of us, we're involved in National League of Cities, US Conference of Mayors type thing during the break. So it's great to be back in the, in the formal meeting scheduled, even though we were all quite busy over the last month and a half or so. Okay. Mr. Brady?
Just a reminder that as Councilmember Glover was alluding to, today we will be having the grand opening ribbon cutting for the Mesa Center for Higher Education. It'll be at 10:00 AM today and we'll have tours. We really excited, this is a great facility. I think it's amazing what you can do with an old court building. So it's a pretty exciting event today. So we'll have both university presidents will be there. And then just a reminder, our next council meeting will be Monday at 5:45. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Nicholson, do we have any requests to speak?
No.
All righty.
Motion adjourned.
Have motion adjourned from Councilman Kavanaugh, second from Councilmember Summers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
I'll hit it, moment.